Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 5:30 PM on Monday, January 6, 2020, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. We'll call this meeting to order. Thank you Pastor David Lorenz for being here. And after the invocation, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance from McKenna and Navea from Daisy Troop 143158. Boy, they got a lot of daisy troops.
If you'll bow with me. Heavenly Father, we come tonight to take care of the business of our community. Lord, we pray that as this meeting progresses, that our city leaders, our community leaders, and our citizens would speak and act with grace and wisdom and clarity. And as presentations are made and decisions carried out this evening, we pray they would be done with great wisdom for the benefit of our community, for the benefit of our people, and that honor you. And lastly, Lord, we pray that we would be people who live with gratitude, thankful for the opportunity to live in a community, in a state, in a country where freedom abounds. And, Lord, we are grateful for the freedom you give us. And so, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Nice job, ladies. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Did you go to a smaller font or something?
I will increase it next time, sorry. I can finish reading it if you'd like.
I'm gonna make it. Let's see here. Furthermore, thank you. Any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. I do have a card, Don Scott. Come on up, sir.
Mr. Scott, I'll be timing you. You have three minutes, and after two minutes, I'll give you a yellow card, which says a one-minute warning, and then the red card when it's timed up.
Not sure if this is the forum, but, um... Let's see. Okay, my name is Don Scott. I live at 201 Hunter's Lane, which is in the Hunter's Creek State. And I'm here tonight to speak on the dangerous intersection at 518 and Hunter's Lane that runs into 518. The area needs a stoplight to prevent a possible fatality from occurring. With the new shops now open across the street from the subdivision, it's almost impossible to get out of the subdivision. Cars now can turn left into the subdivision off 518, as well as left into the new shopping area, which causes a four-way traffic jam going into and coming out of the new area where a traffic light needs to be installed. The situation will only increase for possible fatality once the Chick-fil-A opens up, because I don't know if you're aware of it, but it's been calculated that there's going to be 160 cars that go through Chick-fil-A every hour. Think about the traffic at that intersection, that there's no lights. Right now, my son goes to Friendswood High School. He used to be able to cut across or get into the left lane and make the little U and leave your lane. He can't do that now in the morning. Now, he has to get, when he can get on, make a right, go down to the following light, go back into the neighborhood, then go to school that way. Unnecessary. I don't know who planned to have that shopping center over there, which was great, but there needs to be a light there, otherwise, there's going to be an accident. I think there was an accident there last week. I don't know if the chief can verify that, but that's an accident waiting to happen. And the city, I'm sure you guys are aware of that, it needs to be addressed with tech dot, otherwise, somebody is going to be hurt. I cannot get out of that intersection in the morning when I go. It takes me five minutes. Unnecessary. So, we've got to have better planning to get people in and out of our subdivision, as well as people turning from that new shopping center onto 518, going west or east. It's a problem, guys. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank Mr. Scott. Item five, work session. Friendswood Police Department's mandatory transition to the National Incident-Based Report System, NiBRS.
Mayor and council, we have Deputy Chief Rogers going to present this item to you this evening.
Chief.
Good afternoon. How are you all doing? Happy New Year to you. This'll be a little bit quicker. It's me up here unless y'all talk chief and coming up and clarifying some stuff, so...
That was kind of like the 2020 New Year's resolution.
There you go.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so as we mentioned, the National Incident-Based Reporting, we'll refer it through the presentation as NiBRS. This presentation is purely informational, and we were required by our grid consortium that does the reporting system and our CAD system and the FBI to change from our current UCR protocol to the NiBRS reporting. It was required to be in effect on January 1, 2021, and the consortium began the conversion last October of 2019. Basically, by the way, a background, the UCR was established back in the 1920s with the IACP, which is the International Association Chiefs of Police. And basically, they were standardizing the offenses definitions for eight main offenses. There's a typo in the presentation there. It's seven, it's actually eight. And those are the Part One more serious offenses: murder, sexual assault, aggravated assault, robbery, burglary, arson, theft, and motor vehicle theft. In 1930, the UCR program had begun to get its traction largely with the FBI, then adopted by the state of Texas in 1976. The last 44 years, UCR has been the established reporting protocol. You can see on this slide, on the left-hand side, it's what we primarily used, I guess, for inside the PD and city management, and the city management perspective: budget planning, resource allocation, police operation assessments. And then, some of the other stuff that it's used for there on the right-hand side of the slide, Chamber of Commerce, Torres, criminal justice research, media, and public decision-making. So, that's kind of a spin-off of what it was maybe initially used for, but we are more on the left-hand side internally, within the police department in the city. I think the highlight here is that, you know, when multiple offenses occur in the same episode, only the most serious is being counted. So, that's kind of the criticism of UCR. So, right now, if there was a, we'll see a slide in a minute, but, you know, if we had a situation, let's say like a, that would be a burglary, someone goes into your house, kicks in your front door, steals a couple of credit cards and your TV, right now, the most serious offense of burglary would be classified in that. Not the criminal mischief to your front door, not if they use your credit card at the Sam's later on, the credit card abuse. Those type of offenses, they go with the more serious, only being reported in the current UCR context. So, that's kind of the criticism of the UCR. And I kind of jumped ahead, but that's what that was. You know, taking the extreme example, they use this one in here, you know, horrible crimes as theft, robbery, and sexual assault in a more of a criminal episode, only the more serious being charged. So, when you see accounting protocol, when you change accounting protocol, you're going to see data variations, and in this case, we feel there'll be an increase. You know, the transition from UCR to NiBRS, I think it's important to point out, it's not going to have an operational impact on the best practices that the PD uses to deliver, you know, police services in the city of Friendswood. So, nothing changes as far as what we charge, nothing changes, you know, as far as what we're going to let go or not let go on a typical offense. All of that still stays the same. So, the services that we deliver is not going to change. The only thing is, is that it's going to look a little bit different this next year when we start going from eight to 46 different offenses that we're going to be reporting. And this slide basically talks about what NiBRS is. It's a more detailed crime reporting. UCR was more geared towards, you know, more of a, kind of a summary detail. NiBRS is more detailed information to help with the crime analysis. And I think it's important to point out that, you know, the summary details have worked fine for us in this community, but we're being directed to a more detailed crime analysis. And like I said, the UCR only tracked the eight, the more serious Part One crimes, the murder, sexual assault, ag assault, robbery, burglary, arson, theft, and motor vehicle theft. So, now, we're going to be moving to where we're tracking 46 different crimes. It, you know, operationally, again, doesn't make much difference, requires a little bit more paperwork for the officers and for the records folks when we're reporting this stuff, but other than that, nothing changes. This slide shows the beginning of the NiBRS timeline in the state of Texas, hoping to have everything done here by 2021 with everyone. This next slide is the future integration. This is 2021 projected participation of agencies. So, they're hoping to have, you know, it nationally done, at least with the majority being reported. I think there's somewhere around 18,000 different law enforcement agencies nationally that should be reporting UCR now to FBI. We don't know exactly what that number is, but probably somewhere only around 75% to 80% are even reporting to begin with. So, good luck with that. The slide, this slide really much, pretty much speaks for itself. It will cause a deviation from past counts, and the deviation will become less significant, we think, you know, over time. So, the purpose of the presentation was simply to alert you in the fact that we will have an, this will have an effect on the way the crime rate is viewed. In closing, going from eight to 46 offenses reported, there will be a deviation and likely an increase, and then that should, over time, pretty much resolve, you know, resolve itself. Any questions?
Josh, all the cities in Texas will be on the same program though, right?
All, there's a bunch that already are. There'll be some that probably still do UCR until they're absolutely forced. We were, we were kind of in a situation where we have our CAD and our reporting system in with a consortium, League City. We started that back in 2008. Initially, it was just us, League City, and Webster, and that's grown now to Texas Cities on it, Galveston, Sugar Land, Webster, La Porte, Deer Park, Lamarck. So, it's just, it's continuing, they're continuing to add more and more to that. So, we were forced into going ahead and having to do this, you know, now by that, and then by what the FBI wants done in 2021.
Josh, quick question. You mentioned the deviation. Are we going to see, because now we're reporting not just eight categories, but 46, are we going to, I know it won't be the truth, but it will, will it look like our crime rate has gone up because the number of crimes, you know, one crime could now be three crimes?
Right. So, yeah, it's going to have to be carefully pointed out, you know, from now until the time we start doing that. You know, as far as what it looks like, yes, it initially will look like, you know, there's more crime because we're reporting more. So, you know, the public education piece, once that gets out there, will be important that, you know, and we're looking at a way maybe to go back. I don't know that we'll be able to do that, to show what this crime rate was in this new year under NiBRS, what that would have looked like on the old UCR. We just don't know if we're going to be able to accomplish that because of the way the computer system has changed, has changed it. So, it will look, it'll look a little different, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure y'all will get a lot of word out when you publish the first set of reports about the crime rate and remind everybody that we're on a new system. The school districts had to go through the same thing in the state several years ago, so it looked like a big jump when there really wasn't.
Right.
But in terms of applying for things like safest city designation and things like that, what will those groups look at, and how will they compare from one year to the next? Will they look at the old system, or will they look at, what will they look at?
Well, it should pretty much stay the same because of the offenses that are there. So, the crime rate, yes, will have the appearance, but anyone that gets into that deep, like these different groups will do, they understand what they're comparing us to other agencies that are, you know, may or may not be on the NiBRS, but they understand the differences there between what's being reported and the additional, you know, the additional offenses that are there. But I don't think that, I don't think that affects, I think, maybe in the short term, but as the year progresses and we get, we get there, I don't think that'll have that much effect on those type of things at all.
And when we hear about these things, hey, NISH just reported you as the second safest city in the Houston area, that's not something we applied for. We had no active part of that. This is just a group that is collecting, you know, looking at the FBI crime data.
Right.
And comparing, and like you said, they'll, they're smart enough to know that...
We can't report any more murders than we have. We can't report any more or any less sexual assaults than we have already, and they look at those more serious offenses when they grade that. So, we have, we have a few more, you know, thefts that we hadn't reported before in there in some of those other categories, but it doesn't, it's not going to change what the community is, it's not going to change our crime rate. It is what it is, regardless of what system we have. It just, it's going to look a little different.
Pretty much answered my question. How real-time is the NiBRS reporting? I mean, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, from Galveston County to Harris County, is that seamless? Is it across all jurisdictions?
So, if they're on this system, yes. They, we all entered in the same, the same system.
And we saw the map, said Texas would be 100% by 2021, but we had New Mexico say we'd go out of state. And how real-time is this reporting for other jurisdictions like New Mexico, who hasn't adopted it?
Yeah, so, they still, they're reporting UCR the same way that they are this NiBRS in the computer, so...
I was just wondering, because I've seen some really horrible things happen where someone's family gets killed, they steal the girl and go across county and state lines, and I just didn't know how real-time NiBRS would be in helping with that.
NiBRS isn't going to do anything.
Anything?
Then record data. As far as those types of operational exchanges of information, that's not going to be affected at all. You know, I think Josh mentioned roughly 17,000, I could tell you, 17,985 law enforcement agencies, national, collect data. Of those 18,000, only 16,000 have been, you know, reporting to UCR. So, my Marine mask says that's about 90%. And NiBRS, if you'll take a look at that timeline slide, that Josh, as they started in 1998, and now, only 44% of the agencies are using NiBRS. So, my gosh was saying, good luck. I don't think you're going to go ahead and see nearly this subscription to the NiBRS protocol, probably until sometime, I would say, probably by 2030. And the FBI still didn't get 100%, they got 90%, and I think we're going to see a gap as far as people even participating with this. Josh said, the executive summary protocol worked for us and just given our crime rate and a number of incidents. We don't need to have an onerous, you know, crime reporting protocol to tell us what's going on in the city. We can pretty much figure that out on a daily basis, and really almost hourly, based on the incidents that we have. But if you're a big metropolitan area like Houston, and you're a big metropolitan area like Los Angeles, you're going to need something like this. So, we're going to share that pain for probably a good 24 months, make the change, and we deal with the deviations as far as data goes. So, this is for you to give you a heads up. After this session, we'll begin with the community, to make sure that the community's aware that the way we count crime is going to be different, and there's going to be fluctuations.
Well, no matter how you slice and dice the data, thank you all for doing the great job that you do here in this city to make us definitely one of the top safest cities in the state. And it doesn't matter if you count. Every time somebody jaywalks, it's still safest city, you know, however the data looks. You know, we know we're one of the safest cities. You can compare us to any other city, and we'll find that we are one of the safest cities. Thanks to you all.
Yes, sir.
Leadership of the PD.
Thank you all.
We do have a presentation by a former city manager that is here, if you'd like to move that item up.
Items eight.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Special recognition and acknowledgements. Presentation of the 32nd consecutive Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2017-2018 by Roger Recker. Welcome back, Roger.
Thank you very much.
You are a Friendswood legend.
And you were too kind.
Hopefully, the trumpeters were out there to meet you and all the fanfare that you deserve.
I think I snuck by, whatever that was. Hope you all had a Merry Christmas and a great New Year so far. It's always great to be here with you, and again, I'm here on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. Now, I spent almost 30 years here with the city of Friendswood, and I've had many opportunities to represent the city around the state and around the country as well. Friendswood has such an amazing, great reputation. That's a shock to you, isn't it? No one, no one's surprised by that. But it wasn't a gift. It wasn't something that was given to you. The city has earned this reputation year after year after year after year. You know, I joke about the, I'm not going, Bob's not here, I'm not going to joke about the Patriots, God bless them. But I'm afflicted...
They're out of the playoffs, by the way.
I'm afflicted with the Texans, and it's a week-by-week contract that we're on. We never know what group's going to show up. But Friendswood has this great consistency of year after year after year being excellent and showing excellence. You know, and that, as I said, it doesn't come through a gift, it comes through the hard work of many volunteers, many, many volunteers, through the sacrifice of many honorable elected officials, such as you all, and the patient and dedicated service of your city staff. And City Manager Kabiri, if you would, please thank all of the city employees for the fine work that they do. I would appreciate it. Thirty, more than 30 years ago, think back, I'm not foolish enough to venture a guess on any ages, but I will venture a guess that we all, from this point forward, were standing more than 30 years ago. Think what was going on in your lives at that point. You know, 31 years ago, I was blessed to have the opportunity to begin my career here in Friendswood in 1989. That was almost an eternity ago, it seems like. But to have that long streak of excellence is just an amazing accomplishment. I think back to, some of you will remember the names, Lynn Brewer, Cindy Edge, folks who worked so hard in finance for many years, had great careers here, and started this legacy, this streak of excellence. And tonight, I'm honored to be here and to recognize a couple of folks that are sitting out in the audience who have continued this streak of excellence and continued serving the city so well and been great stewards of the city's financial resources. So, I'd like to ask Katina Hampton to come forward, and I'll let her introduce her aide there. Back in the old days, we used to get one of these annually, and they weren't nearly as heavy as this. But the city wins so many, they now have to give you stickers for each year, and this represents eight years of accomplishment. It's heavy enough to represent that. Katina, congratulations. Thank you for continuing the award, the excellent work that's been done for many years. We're proud of you, and just thank you and congratulate you.
Thank you so much. I'll just quickly recognize Rhonda Blaskas, who is our Deputy Director of Administrative Services over the Finance Division. I also have with me tonight my Deputy Director of Administrative Services over Human Resources, Risk Management, Bill Bender, and also Municipal Court, Pat Riffel. And I just really want to thank the entire staff, council, city manager. These awards do not come easily, and it's definitely the work of everybody in the city, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
And this is the award for 2017, 2018. That's two fiscal years ago.
Correct. The audit for the last fiscal year that ended in September of 2019 is being completed currently, so it'll be a while before we receive that.
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, you know, you're talking about 32 years of getting this, but we've probably got two more that, you know, in the bag that we're not even talking about yet. All right, well, we have some time to move some things up. How about if we just, we could do that? How about if we just could, can we jump down to discussion and possible action? Can we do some of that stuff?
If, as willing to suspend the rules, yes, sir.
They always seem to be ruleless, unfettered by rules. So, let's start. Item 13A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approving the Dedication of the Joyceina, Baker Room at the Friendswood Public Library.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion.
Well deserved. Well deserved.
Matt's got a word in here.
I'm just here to say, on behalf of the library staff and the library board, we would be more than honored to have our conference room named after Joyce Baker in tribute to all the great preservation work she's done for the city of Friendswood. So, and we would look forward to partnering with the Historical Society to continue that work in preserving our history. So, we would be honored.
And for those that don't know, it's the, the big room in the back is going to be named after Joyce.
She is our official historian. She's been here for, help me out.
Since the 40s.
Since the 40s.
She was a young bride.
The 1940s. Yeah, so, well deserved. All right. Any more discussion on that one? All in favor? unanimous. Item B is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Reappointments to the Following Boards and Commissions. This is all Fourth of July Steering Committee to reappoint Tommy McDonald... This is all 4th of July Steering Committee to reappoint Tommy McDonald, Tony Scarpa, Rafino Ramirez, Michelle, sorry, Baycheck.
I would, I don't know off the top of my head, sorry.
Christine Scarpa, Stephanie Karakostas, and Stacy Scarpa, so most of the Scarpa family reappointed to three-year terms, expiring November 2022.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Item C, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approving a Contract with Galveston County for Election Services.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Rod, were you ready to?
Myself or Melinda?
Melinda, anybody wanna talk about the election services contract that we are gonna sign with Galveston County to do our elections again?
Yes, we're just asking to, for council to approve this contract again. We contracted with them for the first time for our May election in May of 2019. Hard to say, hard to believe that was almost a year ago, and we're getting ready to gear up for another election again. We're having, we will be for position number two, and position number five are up for position for, and the sales tax election for the streets is also up. So that's gonna be on next month's agenda to call that election, because the deadline to call that election is February the 14th.
Well, very important that we get out the word on the reauthorization of the sales tax. At three-eighths of a cent that we've been collecting that goes towards street repair has been awesome, I'll just say it. You know, we have been doing a lot of work on our streets the last few years where, since we started collecting this, what is it, come up to about 1.6 million?
It's roughly right now 1.6 million annually to date since the sales tax was approved. It's been over $5 million worth of street. Work has been completed as a result of it.
So, very important that if we're not for that reauthorization, taxpayers coming in and voters reauthorizing, we would really be hurting to try to find that money to keep the streets in the repair cycle that we're in now up. So hopefully, we'll, we'll get everybody out, and they'll be aware. We have signs out on a few places where they say that these streets have, are being repaired with your three-eighths of a cent. Did you have something else to add, Melinda?
I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, because we're gonna definitely have to do an education campaign. It hasn't been determined yet exactly the location of the polling location, but it's not going to be in City Hall for our election, nor any of the county elections that they're gonna be doing for the primary and the primary runoff in their November election, but it's not gonna be in City Hall. But we checked with them again this afternoon to ask if they had determined yet where that's gonna be, and they don't have a final answer just yet, but we'll have that final answer next month. But it will not be in City Hall.
And moving away from City Hall, just because of this, this venue is not ideal for the large turnouts that we're seeing in elections, and we had one woman pass out waiting to cast her ballot and stairs and climbing the stairs and standing around for an hour. Come out and vote early. You know, those of us that are here most days during early voting see the trickle of people that come in to cast their ballots. There's no waiting, you can have a conversation with all those election workers up there, you can shoot the breeze with them, you know, they got nothing else to do, they're happy to see you. Election Day, just the opposite. It's, you know, in the thousands of people, maybe not thousands, but over 1,000 people turning out to vote, and long lines, and it's crazy. So, we will, we'll, we'll let people know where those new voting locations are gonna be, but we'll have them, we'll have voting locations.
Yes, we will, and it will be in Friendswood.
Somewhere in Friendswood. All right, let's see, did we discuss the heck out of that, or?
We need to vote on it.
We need to vote, I do know that. Okay, all in favor? Great. We might better get these, we can't do all the ordinances, we can do, we can do the first three.
You're welcome to do the first three ordinances and the consent agenda, if you'd like.
I think we could probably get through that, depending on my ability to read them. Ordinance number T 2019-47, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82, Traffic and Vehicles by adding Section 82-10, regulating hours of movement of oversized vehicles and adding a definition for oversized vehicle, adding Section 82-11 prohibiting certain oversized vehicles in the downtown district, adding Section 82-12 requiring permitting, permitted oversized vehicles to contact the police department at least 24 hours prior to movement of an oversized vehicle within the city.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Great. Ordinance number T 2020-01, first reading of an ordinance repealing ordinance number 97-20, ordinance number 2000-06, ordinance number 2003-17 that adopted and amended the Municipal Court Building Security Fund and the Municipal Court Building Technology Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Just for the benefit of mayor and council, at the last legislative session, the state adopted rules that prohibited the collection of those funds in the manner that we had stipulated. We're still gonna collect those funds in a different manner, but this is namely to come into compliance with the new state law.
Okay, all in favor? Ordinance number T 2020-02, first and final reading of an ordinance amending city of Friendswood, Texas ordinance number T 2019-38, passed and approved October 7th, 2019. Same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 by approving Budget Amendment 2 to the original general budget of the city of Friendswood, Texas for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, how about Consent Agenda?
I'll make the motion to move the Consent Agenda up.
I'll second it.
Okay, Consent Agenda's moved up.
We, we need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
That was, I was hinting at, but, all in favor? Okay.
How about the city manager's report? Can I move that up or not?
Well, we keep trying to get it out, I mean, it's like the third or fourth time we whip the horse. I don't know if it's whipping out of the stall or not.
Lacking anything else to move up?
City manager's report up.
Rod, you're on.
Yes, sir.
City manager's report, item 11.
Yes, sir. Coming up here in a couple of weekends, Saturday, January 18th, will be the annual Keep Friendswood Beautiful Tree Giveaway. The event starts at 8:00 AM, but you'll notice folks will be lining up well in advance of 8:00, most likely around 6:00 o'clock in the morning, to get their shot at collecting one of the 115-gallon trees that will be available for residents here in Friendswood. You do have to provide proof of residency, either through a utility bill with the city of Friendswood or your driver's license, and families will have the choice, as resources are available, of either a Texas, Yopon, live oak, red oak, cedar elm, vitex, or magnolias. If there's any questions, please contact the Parks Department, but that is one of our more popular events, so please come out early. Recently, the city celebrated its annual Christmas dinner, and there were a number of employees who were recognized for their years of service at that event. Annually, we recognize employees in five-year, 10-year, so on and so forth increments, and I'll be very brief about this, but I'd like to take a moment to read their names, because it does say something about the organization to have the tenure that we do have and the culture that remains here. Under the five-year category, we have Haley Brown in Administrative Services, Sarah Carter in the Police Department, Catherine Domski in the Library, Jennifer Hale in Administrative Services, Richard Haley in the Library, Claudia Hart in Fire Marshal's Office, Allison Leighton in Animal Control and PD, Rolanda Lewis in Administrative Services, Rayandell Lundry in PD, Abel Melendez in Public Works, Gina Mendez in Police, Jeff Neufa in City Manager's Office, Jeff Spears in Administrative Services, and then Christopher Swagert in PD, and Heather Woody in Parks and Rec. Under the 10-year category, we have Rhonda Blaskas in Administrative Services, Sutapa Chatterjee in the Library, Alberto Gomez in Public Works, Kathy Gray in Community Development, Alex Rodriguez in Cesar Zapata and Public Works. 15 years, Mary Artalino in Administrative Services, Doug Bacon in PD, Robert Barfield in Administrative Services, Carol Harges in PD, Richard Lewis in Public Works, Eric Grant in PD, and Keith Rogers at the Library. For 20 years, Karen Capps in the City Manager's Office, James DeMent, Stella Gonzalez, Josh Rogers in Chief Wieners in Police Department. Apparently, that was a good hiring class in 20 years ago. Under the 25-year category, David Brechtel and Doug Lowersdorf in PD. 30 years, Rebecca Dunn in PD, Matt Riley in the Library, and Domingo Rubio, you also know him as Junior in Public Works. And for 35 years, Savino Chapa in our Public Works Department. It's quite a testament to the organization and to the leadership that this council provides, and we thank you for that, and thank you for your support of staff. Last week, or a couple of weeks ago, we were, received notice of a grant award through Wink to Webster Grant Program. Sounds funny to say, but it's a first responder grant program that the Fire Marshal's Office applied to, and the grant was for $3,500 to receive four gas meters that will ultimately be transferred to our volunteer fire department. The meters will be deployed on three fire engines and a tactical vehicle for use during pipeline emergency, hazardous materials releases, fires, and other similar scenarios. Last week, or two weeks ago, folks in the community and council may have noticed an advertisement for a community development block grant disaster recovery application to the General Land Office. The project that was advertised was the utility line relocate, these are the utility lines that go over Clear Creek at Polly Ranch that go from that lift station to the wastewater treatment plant on the Harris County side of the city. The result, the reason for that application advertising was that we were notified, we applied for back in February of 2019, but recently, we were notified that the lift station numbers 1 and 17 combination project that at the time was eligible was deemed ineligible, so we haven't been able to move forward with that, and the state was very specific, you need to find another project to take its place. There's a limit to what projects you can submit. The project that fit the category with the allocation available was the burying of those utility lines over Clear Creek. This serves multiple purposes. Obviously, operationally, it'll be better, the city would be better suited to have this line underground, so it's no longer a nuisance and a potential hazard, but it also helps from a flood mitigation standpoint. You may recall the city talked about and is pursuing terracing and shelving of the creek throughout the reaches of Friendswood, well, we'll need to bury those lines in order to accomplish this anyway. There will be a public hearing officially at the February council meeting, along with a resolution to be adopted in order to complete that application. This is one of multiple applications that we've submitted to the General Land Office on the Galveston County side, acquisitions and infringements Creek and Deepwood areas so that we can do shelving and flood mitigation projects there. On the Harris County side, the emergency shelter at the Blackhawk facility, the old food line, and also the Forest Bend flood mitigation project at 528 and Clear Creek. The Harris County side, those two projects have both been approved by the state, and we're awaiting the Harris County Commissioners Court to execute some contracts so we can move forward with those projects. The Galveston County side is still lagging in the approval process. You may recall Harris County got a direct allocation of these funds, Galveston County had to go through a different method of distribution, and it involves the state, so it's taking a little bit longer than what we had anticipated.
Mo, on these, we will bury them deep enough so we don't have to dig them up when we terrace those areas?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Lastly, with respect to Hurricane Harvey, the hazard mitigation acquisition grant appraisals have all been completed and shared with the property owners. The 26 homes that were originally gonna be bought out is now down to 14 just due to folks that have since moved on and aren't interested, and sidebar comment, we feel for them. This is a grant that's taken well over, well, two-plus years since the event, but well over a year and a half since we made application, and unfortunately, how, it's painstakingly slow, so folks are having to make some tough decisions sooner as opposed to later. The folks that are still involved, we are cutting checks and scheduling closings and hope to be completed with a number of them here in the month of January, so we're excited about that. We're still awaiting word from the FEMA on the Texas Water Development Board flood mitigation grant. There's nothing to indicate that we won't be approved for that buyout application, but FEMA's still sitting on the application, so until we get approval from them, we can't move that, that program forward. I've already mentioned the CDBG disaster recovery items in the previous city manager report item. With respect to Deepwood and our own disaster recovery and our application to FEMA for the old Public Works and Parks facility, we've had to enlist the assistance of Randy Weber's office as well as Pete Olson's office to get items off that center. FEMA initially responded to both their offices, saying they're awaiting information from the city of Friendswood. We provided FEMA's written correspondence to us that contradicted that to the congressman's office, and they quickly followed back up with FEMA. At this time, we've received word they're still reviewing the application, but it's not due to anything lacking on our end. It's FEMA's gridlock. Lastly, the Whitcomb property staff has exchanged a draft memorandum of understanding with Clear Creek Community Church. This is the property on 528 that fronts, has about a mile of frontage on Clear Creek. We're working with them so that we can get shelving project pursued sooner as opposed to later at that location. So, that's it for the city manager's report.
Can I add something here for?
Yes.
I was at the farmer's market this Saturday, and I watched an elderly woman trip on that concrete area, and there's a lot of little step-ups and step-downs from when it was fire station, and I know the bond didn't pass, we were gonna take care of that whole thing, but, and was it you that also tripped?
I was hoping no one saw me, but.
Can we do something, just, can we do something to maybe use yellow stripes or maybe a little bit of ramping or something to make it a little less dangerous? I'm not asking for a lot of money or a big overhaul, but I think just make it a little safer, if you would, guys would take a look at that, thanks.
Yes, sir.
I saw the Chair of ZBOA walk in. How about item 12, Communications from Committees and Special Reports, Annual Report from Zoning Board of Adjustment Chair Phil Ratisova.
Who went to one meeting and was made Chair. Congratulations. Yes, talk about Ramrod, I mean, asked to serve. Thank you, evening, mayor and council. The ZBOA had one meeting last year, and as you well know, I was elected chairman, that turns out the gentlemen serving on that board are not interested in serving in that capacity due to numerous personal obligations, and some of them term, will term out this week, this summer, and they do not want to serve anymore. So, I was there. Anyway, last year, we had multiple cases before us, or multiple hearings, I believe the majority of them were all the same address, and that, and we discussed the upcoming consistency of council changing the zoning ordinance to match the state law and the impacts of that, and we didn't see any problem. It will be a little bit easier for citizens, and hopefully, not too many problems for the city. That's it, thank you.
Thanks for stepping up, Phil.
Congrats.
All right, item six, Closed Executive Session. A, Communication from the Public Regarding Executive Session Topics. Is there anyone that would like to address us regarding our closed executive session topic? Okay, item B, Council May Reconvene Into Executive Session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to seek advice of its attorney on legal matters subject to the attorney-client privilege with possible discussions and action related thereto an open session. We'll be back at 7:00. All right, we're gonna reconvene here into open session. Jumping down, our next item is item nine, Public Hearing. Receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding A, adoption of an updated official zoning map per Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 3, provision for official zoning map incorporating zone changes and corrections since the last adopted map dated January 5th, January 8th, 2015. Number 9A.
Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on this, and their recommendation was in favor of the new map unanimously, five to zero.
All right, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this item? All right, I'm gonna move to. All right, I'm gonna move to item B, proposed amendments to appendix B subdivision ordinance, section three, K, three sidewalks, to not require sidewalks in existing residential areas if sidewalks do not already exist.
Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on this item and the recommendation was unanimous, five to zero in favor.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the public want to speak for or against this item? Item C, proposed amendments to appendix C zoning ordinance, section seven, schedule of district regulations, section 7.5, community overlay district, and section eight dot N downtown district supplemental requirements to change building material requirements per House Bill 2439.
The Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing, the vote again was five to zero in favor of the changes. And just wanted to point out, we did leave all of our materials in the ordinance so we can tell applicants and citizens what our preferences are, so all that information's still in there.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience want to speak for or against this item? Okay, moving on, item 10, do you have any cards? Do I need to read this? Communication from the public? Okay, I'm gonna skip that item and go to...
We just have three ordinances left.
Three ordinances. Great.
14D.
Item 14D, ordinance number T 2020-03, first reading of an ordinance amending appendix B subdivision ordinance, section three dot K dot three sidewalks, to add exceptions to sidewalk requirements for existing residential subdivisions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Steve?
Murad, could you explain in the changes what it means by a property is an infill tract without an abutting sidewalk?
So, these properties would include those that are currently vacant lots or soon-to-be vacant lots in which, for instance, a home in an existing subdivision, the home is torn down and a new one rebuilt, it would be considered an infill tract, or if you have an area of town where, let's say, not all the lots are already built on, but the majority of the homes exist, that vacant lot of home is now built, that would be considered an infill tract. So, if that entire subdivision did not have a sidewalk previously, they would not be required to put in a sidewalk for that one lot as it's developed.
But if there, if there were sidewalks?
They would be required to put one in.
Any other discussion? All in favor? E, ordinance number T 2020-04, first reading of an ordinance amending appendix C zoning ordinance, sections seven, schedule of district regulations, section seven dot five, community overlay district, and section eight dot N downtown district supplemental requirements to change building material requirements per House Bill 2439.
Reluctantly move. Second. I don't like the House bill.
What?
It was reluctant.
I said reluctantly move to approve this because I don't like the state law, so.
Is that an official?
Mm-hmm, it's a motion.
An executive.
Can we talk about it?
Let's talk.
As Trish was like, was trying to say here, this is a huge overreach by our state legislature and something that they should be ashamed of doing and they should be encouraged very strongly by all of us, whoever gets elected back in the legislature to overturn this. It's a stupid law and it needs to be changed and so, I'm gonna vote for this because we really have no choice, but this was really an overreach.
I like the fact that Aubrey, that we left the preferred materials in our ordinances so that people can see that and, you know, I said at the beginning, why don't we just leave our ordinance as is and not enforce it, you know? We're not allowed by state law to enforce these, but we could have them on the books. But I think city attorney wanting to keep us very clean and above board, we're fixing it for the time being and hopefully in two years we'll come back and we'll add it back in the way it is previously, was previously. All in favor? Ordinance number T 2020-05, first reading of an ordinance amending appendix C zoning, section three, provisions for official zoning map to update and adopt the official zoning map of the city incorporating approved changes in district boundaries and other matters portrayed on the official zoning map.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Okay, I think we are down to communications from mayor and council members. Any volunteers? John Scott.
Just wanna let everybody know, election season's coming up and it's my turn, so I will be running again for city council position five and it's been a tremendous honor serving up here for the last nine years. I can't believe it's been nine years, but if I'm fortunate enough, I will serve the last three years of eligibility the same way I served the previous nine, so that's it.
Well, it's been an honor serving with you for the last four years that I've been, had the privilege, so good luck. Brett, do you think? Robert?
I'm not having to run.
You've run enough. God, if we see your name on the ballot again, Jesus. Trish?
Mine's a little sad news. Over the holidays, we lost two students at Friendswood. I think both were seniors and unexpectedly for both, and so if you'll keep those families in your prayers, it's always hard to lose young people, but especially over the holidays.
I have two things. First, I'd like to make everyone aware that per our agenda earlier this evening, we approved the renaming of the conference room at the library for Josanna Day Baker and there will be a reception this Wednesday at 5:00 at the library. There's plenty of cake, so please come and join us and help celebrate Josanna. The other thing is, I like the way John said that, I'm position number two and I'm up. I've only served for two and a half years so far. The time has really flown. It has been a true honor to serve this community in this capacity and I would be very, it would be a privilege to be able to continue that for a second term, so I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring again and I would appreciate your support.
I'd like to point out that Commissioner Gary Harris from the Galveston County appraisal, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, sorry, commissioner, glad to see you there here tonight, his lovely bride, Linda, Sally's parents are here. Didn't you wanna run up and take a picture while she was making that great speech? No, okay. Plenty of pictures of Sally out there, too many, some would say.
Well, I'd like to throw out there, my dad's up for reelection as well, so we'll be on the same ballot.
Wow, wow. Well, good luck to you too, Gary.
What, what time is the library?
5:00.
5:00.
5:00 on Wednesday and Matt Riley, I apologize, I didn't say that when we passed the agenda item, but the library is very excited about hosting this. This is actually, they started this and we're very excited to, the Historical Society's excited, I say we, Historical Society's been very excited to participate in this as well, but the library is very excited about that. Thank you.
Steve, you gotta go, I know.
Well, actually, we're doing great. On that being, I have been cast again in another play in town. It's called August, Osage County, and I have actually done this play before, the same role. It is a fabulous play. It'll be in a couple of weeks in February. It won a Pulitzer Prize, it won a Tony Award. It's a very adult play, adult language, and it's the female characters with all the salty language.
Are you a female character?
No, I'm not a female character this time. I play...
It was last time.
Yeah, it's always a debate. No, I, I play Bev Weston, who is the family patriarch and a melancholy drunk poet, and fortunately for all, I'm only on stage for the first 20 minutes. But I'm gonna encourage you all to come because it's supporting the arts in Friendswood and while this is a lengthy play, this is really an awesome play and some really great people are being, are in the show, so.
When does it run? When does it?
It's two weekends of February, I'll come tomorrow, let you know.
Are you off book yet?
I am because I've done this role before.
You've done it before, you got your soliloquy down pat.
And it's, and it's nice.
It's nice because what they call blocking in the theater where you're supposed to be moving around, he just sits in a chair and drinks, you know, which is really easy to do.
It's just like you at home.
Yeah. Well, actually, I don't drink, so I, so I have to fake it with ginger ale or something.
Yeah, you have to say that, I know. Well, I'll just, I'll just reemphasize that part of this election cycle, we are gonna put our sales tax reauthorization for the three-eighths of a cent that goes towards our street repair, street maintenance, very important that we get out and support that one. That money has been critical to us doing a lot of the maintenance on the streets that have needed it for a while and 1.6 million dollars, we'd be hard pressed to find that in our budget without really cutting services other places that we don't wanna do, obviously. So, pretty easy to support since it's sales tax money. You know, most of the people that were spending their sales tax money don't live here, they come into Friendswood, buy something, leave some sales tax money and we put it towards the streets, so state law requires us to do this every four years, so that's unfortunate, but we'll do it, we'll pass it, very important. So, that being said, we are done, we're adjourned. Thank you all.